Good morning. I'll call the Kent County Board of Commissioners, Community Health and Safety Committee to order. It's Tuesday, November 25th, 8:31 in the morning. Good morning, everybody. We'll move on to the second item on the agenda, public comment. Anybody from the public wishing to address the committee this morning? I'm seeing none. Everyone slept in this morning with a rainy rainy morning. So we'll move on to agenda item number three, approval of the minutes. I'll entertain a motion to adopt the minutes moved by Commissioner Morris, supported by Commissioner Merchant. All those in favor of approval of the minutes from September 23rd, 2025, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. The minutes are approved. Okay, item number four is our special order of businesses. We have two of them this morning. We'll begin with our Veterans Services Agency Annual Report. With us this morning is Ryan Grams, who is the Director of the Veterans Services Agency. Good morning, Ryan.
Good morning, thank you.
Thank you for being here. We look forward to your presentation.
Thank you for having me today. I wanted to start off by saying that I've been really excited to be here this morning because it's been a very big year at Veterans Services. It's been my first full year as Director and a lot of big changes has happened. So been kind of happy to get on over here and show you. So to start, there we go. At Veterans Services, our mission is always to help the veterans, our community, get the benefits that they are eligible for. And that's both federal, county, and state benefits and connecting them to all the resources in the county. And that's always our goal every day. So for this year, we have done 747 fully developed claims for veterans for disability ratings, both non-service and service-connected. We've had an award, 506 of those awarded for veterans. This has brought us to, this is really big, almost $11 million of federal money coming in for veterans into their households, which then gets spent in our county, keeps them fed, housed, everything that they need. That's really what our bread and butter is, what we try to do every year. And as you see, that's 133% increase from last year. Last year, we were at 4.7 million. We brought it up to almost 11 this year. So I'm very excited about that. Yeah, it was a big, big year. You see, we went, we only did 466 last year. Now, I will note, as you see, last year was where we changed over from calendar to fiscal year. So we had one quarter short of numbers when I reported, but it's still a huge jump. So it was a big year, really excited. We also run at the Veterans Services. We also have the Mercy Relief Fund, the Soldier Sailors Relief, and we administer that. We had this past year 93 applications approved, and these applications are for housing, food, electric bills when people cannot pay them. We're able to step in and help them stay in their homes, keep their lights on, keep the heat on, keep the families fed. So we had 93 approved applications, and we have given out $107,000 worth of aid to veterans in this county and their families. And this fund is not just for veterans alone, it's also for surviving spouses. So if a surviving spouse had problems, we're able to help, step in and help them also. We've had 19 approved burial applications for the County Burial Fund. So our County Burial Fund is a $300 fund that helps veterans and their families, both surviving spouses again, and veterans if they pass to help pay for funeral costs. We're able to do that. And overall, we've spent $5,400 this year. I will say that this year was, we spent a little more than we did last year. So a little more desk going on, the end of the World War II era is happening. So that's why we're a little bit up right now. So back to our Soldier Sailors Relief Fund, the different distributions of funds that we spend most on is housing, as you see. We do a lot of rents, a lot of housing, a couple mortgages in there, and our second biggest cost is for helping with food. So we do a lot of helping with food and securities out there in the community. And then it goes all the way down the water, electric heat, but food and rent are our big ones. A couple of different statements to give out there for veterans. People have come in, used our services. We have someone who said like, wonderful event, talking about the Women's Banquet and the Stand Down, which I'm going to talk about Women's Banquet in just a moment. A wonderful event, I'm glad to take part and help serve our veterans, the volunteers all join in what need to be done. We worked with a great team. And I got to say, our Veteran Stand Down this year was amazing. We had 54 volunteers that came out and helped run this thing. We had the most people have ever come and participated in there. I think our last number was in the 160s, participants of people coming in and getting resources from the community and the veterans. It was an amazing event. We held it in the back parking lot behind the hospital, so we had a lot more room to spread out, bigger tent. Everyone loved it, it was great. Handicap accessible, good, good year for that. Another one from some of our surveys that we give out to some of our clients is one of our VSOs, Jeremy. They said that Jeremy was outstanding, went out of his way to help me, he repeated questions for me because of memory loss, called me at home to check on me, Jenna, the clerk greeted me as soon as I walked in the door, she's very kind, and just that they appreciate the service and kindness of our staff at the facility. That's something we really always want to push is that we want people to be warm coming into our place, feel like they're coming in their home and really be listened to. So it's a big deal for me, warms my heart. Couple other things we got going on down there right now. We have, talk about the different programs we have running through our Millage Fund, which I've been asked to say, most of our funding is straight from a millage. We have a Veterans Millage that gets voted on. Right now, it's good until 2029, and that's what all of our funding runs at this moment. We did have a grant that was running a couple of things through the state with the MVAA grant, but along with the whole grant process that happened this year, there's some snafus in that, so we lost a lot of that this year. So most of our stuff is still running off of the millage. Different programs we have running out Millage, we have Degage Ministries, which they have reported to me, they helped 32 veterans this year. We have Community Rebuilders, which has helped 48 different veterans this year. Degage Ministries is for women veterans to come in, get hygiene products, lockers, showers, and they help them with getting IDs and things like that. That's what that program is for. Community Rebuilders is for helping rebuild bathrooms if someone needs handy, handy chair, accessible kitchens, bathrooms, countertops. They come in and help with that, and we help fund some of that going on. Same with Disability Advocates, which they were able to help 77 veterans, they do kind of the same thing. So they usually do a little bit bigger dollar amount stuff because we give them a little bit more money. They do like full bathroom remodels with new showers, all in with, you can have a chair roll into a shower, things like, they do big ticket items. Senior Neighbors, they were able to help 15. Senior Neighbors does mostly like full roofs to help seniors. If their roof is leaking, they'll go and replace the entire roof. They do very large ticket items. My Community Dental is one of our favorite programs out there. It's to help veterans who have no dental insurance or very little dental insurance, are having issues with their teeth. They're able to go to my community dental in the three different locations we have in the county, which is up in Rockford, Kentwood, which is right by my house, and the one in Wyoming, they can get free dental care. And this year alone, we've, they, we helped 262 veterans get that help, sorry about that. Get help with their teeth, and that's still rolling on right now. We have, we also give money to the Veterans Court of Kent County. They have 10 veterans that are in that program right now, going through the Veterans Court process, which they have their own. They do mental health, they do Veterans Court, it's a drug court type thing. Then we have Arbor Circle, who they are maxed out right now with participants, it's 74 participants. That's a, for a substance abuse rehab, counseling, one-on-one and group therapy. So they have, they're helping 74 veterans right now getting through that process. A lot of those veterans actually came out of Veterans Court or came to them from other sources, and they love it. I get so many great things coming from the veterans that are participating in it. The person that runs it, her name is Sarah over there. She, she runs all the different groups and she, she is absolutely awesome, veterans love her. We also, every year, do the Art Prize, Veterans Art Prize downtown at the Veterans Park. And I know a lot of people here have come down, checked that out, saw that, it was really neat, it was really good. We had a good turnout this year and had a Purple Heart recipient do a speech down there, which was really cool, it was really heartwarming, you know? Al was there, thank you for coming, and it was really neat to see, it was really neat to watch. And then the one thing we did this year completed, we were able to keep the Riverside Cleaning, Home Cleaning Initiative under the state with their cuts, I was able to keep that one there. This year going on, I've actually moved it over to Millage, so it'll be moved over. But we, they had 48, 45 participants this past year, and they did 481 cleanings for veterans that are too disabled to be able to clean their homes, things like that, yeah. And they go in, they actually go in twice a week and help throughout the year to keep their homes clean. I mean, just because you can't get up and clean yourself doesn't mean you don't need help. So we come in and we're able to help do that, and they, they love it. They, if you're at the, the state of the county, we had one of those participants actually did a video on that. So Mr. Baxter came and that's what he was talking about, the state was the house cleaning and how much help that is for them. Next, if you all saw, we had a couple of different pictures of things going on. We had the Females Appreciation Banquet, which Commissioner Hennessy was there and did our proclamation, thank you very much. And she was also joined by Commissioner Sparks and Halsted, that were both there, Commissioner Halsted. And I think you all had a great time, I had a great time, it was a good, good turnout. We, the biggest turnout we've ever had, this was our fifth annual, and usually we have about 43 participants. This year, we had 148 that came and participated. It was a big party and everyone talking and everyone, all the different female veterans talked to yourselves. And it was a really good time, we had a great speaker who was a combat helicopter pilot, and she was, her story was amazing. So it was a really great time, I hope you had fun there. And then also, we had, as I said, we had the pictures of the Homer Stand Down. That was, that 150 was not my final number, it was when I got that, but I got a new number, so we're about 163 now, sorry about that. But yeah, we had different vendors, 50 different vendors, 53 volunteers, a couple of different pictures of stuff going on down there. It was a great day, absolutely great day. So. A couple other things we also did, we participated in a couple of different parades this year. We had the, these are pictures from the Fourth of July Parade, as you see Jenny was in there. And we had a good time, it was hot that day, but we had a lot of fun walking down. That was at the Kentwood one, we also did Downtown Wyoming, we were also down there. And then later in the year, we just finished doing up the Veterans Day Parade, which Commissioner Hennessy walked with us on that too, and we had a great time, it was nice and cold, but we had a great time and a good turnout this year, a little bit better than last year, and we all had a lot of fun. So from there, I do want to say thank you all, not just this committee, but this entire Board of Commissioners. Every year, you've always supported us very much, and we appreciate it every single year. And without your support, we, we would never be here. So thank you very much. And open up, any questions out there for me?
Great, thank you, Ryan, appreciate that. Excellent presentation. I can just hear the passion and commitment in your voice, so appreciate that very much. I had one quick question. The Millage expires in 2029, what is the Millage rate, again, if you can remind me, and also what does that generate annually roughly?
I can't remember the rate right off the top of my head, but I know for this last year, we were at 2.9 million is what I had this last year.
2.9, okay.
Yeah, I can't remember which tent it is right off the top of my head.
Okay, no problem, we can get that. Somebody knows, I'm sure.
So I usually know, it's written down in my office, I just didn't bring it today.
Not a problem. Commissioner Hennessy has a question.
Thank you, Ryan. You mentioned, I really appreciate all you do and how far and how accountable you seem to be with, you know, all of the Millage dollars that you're receiving, and you're reporting back to us in a way that just makes a whole lot of sense in terms of your outreach. And you're involving the veterans in the things that are going on themselves, you know, like the Fourth of July Parade, the Women's Veterans Dinner, which was an, was beautiful room and outstanding participation, and the women really appreciated it. It continued on Facebook for a few days after, but with, in the Veterans Parade, it was one of your counseling staff, one of your staff members, who was the keynote speaker and who spoke of his experiences. And Jeremy's comments were just very, very touching. And so, you know, you bring a lot of heart and soul into your work with the veterans, I appreciate it.
Thank, thank you very much, thank you.
Commissioner Morse.
Thank you, Chair. Great presentation, thank you very much. Just a quick question on the first slide. You showed us the extreme jump from 24 to 25, and I was just curious if you could give us like a very broad answer on what the major reason was for the jump in the, the award, the claims for the veterans, even with the fiscal year difference. But I mean, what's the reason for that change?
Well, I actually have been thinking about that a lot leading up to today, because I noticed that too. And this is what I really truly believe, I can't say for certain, but what I believe is, when I was going to get this job, when I was sitting there going through interviews with Al and everything, my big part was, I've been here since 2010, and I always heard that, oh, we didn't know you existed. You know, I'd hear that out in the community, over all these years of working here, that was what I wanted to stop. That's what I want to end, that's me becoming here. And I think a big part of it is, we hired a new outreach coordinator, Daniel Zar, who is absolutely amazing, he's getting out there. And that's a big part of it. We have a large map in our office now, a heat map, and we're getting out of downtown. I wanted to go where the veterans are, so we've been getting out to Rockford, getting all the way up to Kent City. We've been doing lunch and learns in different parts all over the county to the rural areas, going where the vets are. I think that's what's really caused, because we have had such an influx now, and it's actually happening the way I liked it to happen. A big part of it is Dan and a lot of my other VSOs going out, doing these tables, talking to veterans at their places. We had like, a little bit ago, went to a company that hires a lot of veterans, and we did a whole lunch and learn that entire day. We sat there for four hours doing claims at their business. So it's been doing stuff like that. In two weeks, I'm going to a resource fair in Caledonia at their American Legion Hall. We're going to be there till like 8 o'clock, helping doing some claims there. So people don't have to come downtown, I can get to them, and that's what we're really been pushing this year. So I think that is directly what's causing such a huge influx of people, so.
Great, Commissioner Boujat.
Thank you, Chair. So Caledonia, what, what's the date and what's the time?
I don't have the date off the top of my head, I know it's in December, I think it's around December, but I'll get back to you, let me email you that, okay?
Yeah, I'd like to attend, let me know.
Yep, I will email you that as soon as I get back, Dan has the actual date.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Legrand and then Morales.
Thank you, Chair. First, you answered my first question, which is, do enough people know about your services? And the answer is more no than they used to, but you're still working on it.
And it will always be a work in progress, but I'm going to keep fighting that one.
Okay, so when you talk about filing claims, this is for claims for federal benefits that they're eligible for?
Yes.
Okay, all right.
Yep, both service-connected and non-service-connected. So a service-connected claim is obviously you got injured in the military. A non-service-connected claim is if it's something that the military did cause, but it's still, you can't work. So the VA can step in and help. A lot of times it's for elderly past 65, but I have young people who get hurt on a job and then they can't work after that. Social Security does pick up the whole cost, VA has a program to help with that.
That's wonderful. Now, I arrived a little late, so maybe you said this, but do you have a, any sort of dollar figure for how many, you know, how much money you're able to get these veterans and benefits?
Not exactly, it's, a lot of them are sliding costs, like for service connection, you have different percentages. It runs from a 0% rating, which gives you healthcare for free for the rest of your life. Like myself, I have a 0% rating in this ear because I lost my eardrum to artillery fire. I could get hearing aids in this ear for free for the rest of my life. VA's hearing aids are $5,000 a pop too, so that's really nice. But my knee, I have a 10% rating on my knee, so that gives me $154 on my knee. You can go all the way up to 100%, and then you can add different things onto it. I think the highest dollar amount for service connection I've ever seen is in the $10,000s a month. And that's adding a whole bunch of stuff to it, a whole bunch of different special ratings and things. For non-service-connected disability pension, those go up, if you add aid and attendance, they're running at around the $1,800 a month mark right now. And then you also have DIC, which is for surviving spouses who their veteran was, died due to a military cost. They're at $1,695 a month right now.
Well, thank you very much, I mean, obviously it's very complicated, and I don't want to put too much money on just metrics, but it is nice to think like how much you're bringing to these veterans in terms of the benefits that they're entitled to. So that is just wonderful work, thank you.
Real quick, I also want to say, Jane just had me, we have .05 mil was approved by the voters, and we have it adjusted to .0496 mil.
Excellent, thank you.
Thank you.
The administrator was on that too, so I think we're all on the same page. I think, if my math is right, that's five cents per $1,000 of taxable value that we're paying as property, those who own property, so. Commissioner Morales.
Thank you, Chair. I had a follow-up to Liz's question, since you did have such an impressive like uptick in cases and just like connectivity, do you feel like that curve is going to continue to trend upwards as you continue with your outreach within the next couple of years? And if so, what does that do for your capacity?
So this is something we talk about in the office a lot, because we do hit, in the, in our business, we will hit plateaus depending on what's going on. So like during a wartime, we get a lot of service-connected disability claims because people are coming back from war. War's kind of slowed down now, so now we're just kind of slowing down in those things. As you age up, we get the non-service comes up. So right now, we're actually in a lull for non-service because the World War II people are going out. We're waiting for the Vietnam era to get to that age. Once they age up to that point, we're going to jump up and be doing more non-service. When I started here in 2010, we did nothing but non-service disability claims because it was all World War II. We're in that age of 65 to 70 to 80, they're game, that was all we did. Now, since they have passed away most of the time, right now, we're getting down to those last few that are left. Now we're doing more service connection because we've had a war. So it's going to do this as we go, you know? And then the next peak will be the original Gulf War will come, and then we'll peak up like that. So it comes with hills and valleys of what we go, we just flow with.
Great, I don't see any more questions. Again, thank you, Ryan, for all you do, for our veterans for this county, we appreciate your service, your hard work, and we can, we can hear the passion in your voice, so just keep it up, we appreciate you.
Thank you, and I appreciate all of you, like I said, without all this whole board's support, we couldn't be here, so thank you all.
You bet. Okay, we'll move on to item 4B, our second special order of business. With us this morning is Ryan Kilpatrick. Again, I think you were here a few months ago, Ryan. So this is part two of the Housing Next, the Corridor Strategy Presentation. And I think you were supposed to be joined by Josh, but I don't see him in the audience this morning.
Yeah, Josh had a couple other things he had to attend to this morning, so thanks for accepting just me today.
Well, we'll give Josh a lot of hassle next time we see him.
Okay, great. So this morning, what I really wanted to address is the Housing Needs Assessment that was released in June of 2025. So I was here a couple of months ago to talk about the corridor strategy, I'll fold that in. Josh Spencer and I have been kind of talking about doing the Housing Needs Assessment update for a couple of months, and I think there's been some recent communications going around, around the true housing needs, so I think this is a timely update. Real high level, just as a reminder, Housing Next is a regional organization. It's nested inside of the Greater Grand Rapids Chamber Foundation. We work to ensure an adequate supply of housing at all price points. So we're concerned about deep, low income, low and moderate income, middle income, and market rate housing. All of it is important, and if we fail at any of those things, there are cascading impacts across the ecosystem. The Housing Needs Assessment is conducted every couple of years by an organization called Bowen National Research. And so they're a national organization, they do hundreds of these housing needs assessments across the country every year. And they have a very specific methodology. And so really quickly, I want to talk through their methodology for arriving at the gap estimate. If you're interested in the full report, it's on our website, housingnext.org, just click on data, and you'll see the Housing Needs Assessment for both Kent County and Ottawa County there. It's a 400-page report, and so we don't expect a lot of people are going to read it, but it is there if you'd like to read the whole thing. And the methodology for these gap estimates is outlined in, in the report. But the things that are really important to understand are, the Housing Needs Assessment and the gap estimates are based on a handful of factors. One is anticipated household growth. This is not population growth, it's household growth, right? So what's important about that is, right now, we have a lot of young adults who are aging out of the stage when they're going to continue to live with their parents, and they're forming their own households. And so one of the really important things about Kent County and West Michigan generally over the last decade or so is we used to lose the majority of our college graduates to other metro areas. Now, 83% of college graduates stay in West Michigan after they graduate from college. And so instead of, so oftentimes what's happening here is, you've got mom and dad who are in their 50s, two kids who are 18 to 24. As those kids age out of their parents' houses, they're not adding to the population, but they are adding to housing demand, right? So those two kids lived in Kent County all along, but as they grew up and became young 20-somethings and got their first job, they moved out into the world. Now they need a one-bedroom apartment or a studio apartment. And if we haven't built those things, even though the population didn't change dramatically, we need more housing for those individuals. So that's, that's the first key. There are also other things related to household growth. We've got new people moving in, taking jobs. We've got a lot of retirees right now. The baby boomer generation is kind of in the last few years of full employment. And so what we're going to start to see as those baby boomers retire is we need to attract more people into the region to take the jobs that they're leaving behind. Our birth-to-death rate isn't keeping up, right? And so we've got to attract more people into the region, and we need good, affordable housing options in order to attract those people to take the jobs that retirees are leaving behind. The other elements, we've got more than 55,000 households in Kent County that are considered severely cost burdened. What that means is they're spending 50% of their income or more on housing. Now, the immediate solution for those households isn't necessarily to, well, we're just going to build a brand-new unit and that will solve their cost overburden. But what we do know, and there's really good research to demonstrate this, is when we have more supply in the marketplace, what that does is it creates higher vacancy, it creates more churn in the market, and that lowers prices. We're seeing this happen in a significant way right now in high-growth markets like Austin, Texas, Nashville, Tennessee, where they've built a lot of housing over the last five years. They're seeing a higher vacancy rate, and they've seen rental rates drop by 20 to 25%, right? So keep in mind, there are two ways to make housing affordable. The first is to offer a really big subsidy to everybody who needs it. And if we have the money available, I think that's an okay solution, right? Having a big subsidy available to a lot of people can be very beneficial. The problem is when you have 50,000 households who each need $500 a month in subsidy, you run out of money really fast, right? We're talking about billions of dollars of subsidy that we don't have. We're talking about billions of dollars of subsidy that we don't have. So the other way to solve for housing affordability is to ensure there is an adequate and abundant amount of supply available. And that's supply at all price points. That's market rate, that's middle income, that's low income. So solving for all of those things creates new pressures in the market. And what we're starting to see now is rents are leveling off. We saw rent growth of more than 45% between 2019 and 2023. A lot of that was due to COVID, a lot of it was due to scarcity in the marketplace. We're now seeing a much more normal stage of rent growth compared to previous years. So all of that said, I'm going to give you a quick highlight of what the numbers say, and then I'm more than happy to answer whatever questions you have. So when Bowen does their Housing Needs Assessment, they look at both rental needs and for-sale needs. And as you can imagine, those influence each other. If we're not producing enough for-sale housing for first-time homeowners, those first-time homeowners are going to be trapped in the rental market for longer than they want to be. So we see some of this show up in the rental demand. We need roughly 2,000 households for, or 2,000 housing units for households earning more than 120% of the median income, or about $123,000 a year. And you can see across each column how many more housing units we need. And generally, I'll come back to that slide. Generally, we need to produce about double the amount of rental product that we've been producing for those moderate to high-income households. And that's doable, right? Because right now, what we've been producing in Kent County is about half of what we historically produced in the 1980s and 90s on a per-capita basis. So just to repeat, we're producing about half of what we used to produce on a per-capita basis when we compare today's numbers to the numbers of production in the 1980s and 1990s. Now, the second thing is, for our lowest-income households, if we were going to try to provide supply for our lowest-income households, we're off track by a factor of 15X. And the big reason for that is we don't have enough subsidies to support the cost, the high cost of new construction for our lowest-income households. And so that's why we're really an advocate of ensuring that we're building enough middle-income housing and enough market-rate housing so that the older, naturally occurring affordable housing becomes available to those lowest-income households. I would love to provide a subsidy to everybody who needs it, we just don't have those dollars available to us. The federal government provides about $28 million of federal subsidy to the state, which then gets passed across all of Michigan. $28 million, to put that in perspective, allows us to build about 200 units per year. So you can see if we need 3,800 units just in Kent County, and the amount of federal subsidy that comes to the state allows us to produce about 200 units at a time, there's not even close to the amount of subsidy from the federal government necessary to solve for that number. And so that's why we think about both subsidy and supply in the same breath. Now that said, we are producing about 1,000 new rental units every single year, and about 17% of those rental units are income-restricted and affordable to low- and moderate-income households. So that's a pretty good number. We'd like to tick that up a notch, get it closer to about 25% of overall production. We feel like there are enough resources out there in the system that we could achieve a 25% rate. But much higher than that, we'd have to seek new sources of funding. So then, as I mentioned, the other really important component here is the availability and affordability of for-sale housing. I think a lot of people have a long-term dream of becoming homeowners, if they're not already homeowners. It's one of the foundations of wealth creation in our society and has been for a long time. And so thinking about how do we ensure that we're producing enough housing that is available and affordable to middle-income households is really important. So here, again, same table, just for for-sale. We're seeing a lot of need in our middle-income households, those earning $50,000 to $127,000 a year. There is still substantial need for higher-income households. But what we're producing here is on track for those highest-income households. If you're earning $125,000 a year or more, chances are there's a new product in the marketplace that you can afford that's already being built. And so we really don't need to increase production in that column. We need to continue the same amount of production that we've created over the last several years. There it is. However, we're not producing enough housing for our middle-income and lower-income housing, uh, households that would be available for sale. And so what we're seeing is, I failed to put the number in there, but we're off track by about 5X, right? We need to produce about five times more for-sale housing units in order to meet the amount of need that there is among middle-income households who can qualify for a mortgage. They just can only qualify for a mortgage that's somewhere between $100,000 and $250,000, right? And so if you've been on Zillow lately, or you've been checking the MLS for what houses cost, good luck finding something under $250,000 in the marketplace today. Doesn't mean it's not possible to build. The trick is thinking about, are we building the right product for the households that are in the market today? So we'll talk about that in just a minute. So as I mentioned, the, the main factors are household growth, upward economic mobility, commuters on the move. This is a big factor I didn't touch on earlier. We've got about 80,000 households or individual workers that commute into Kent County every single day. So they might live in Muskegon, or Ottawa, or Ionia. Some, some of them live in Kalamazoo, some live in Battle Creek, and they're commuting into Kent County every day for work. There is an assumption that of those 80,000 workers, somewhere between, between 10 and 20% would choose to live in Kent County if there was an available, affordable option that made sense for their family. For as long as there isn't a great option for their family, for as long as they can find something that has the right amount of square footage for the right price point, that's in a good school district for their kids in another location, they'll stay. But what's important about this is, as we build more dynamic neighborhoods in Kent County, we're going to do something called induced demand, right? So we're going to build new vibrant neighborhoods. Those are going to attract the people who are already in Kent County, as well as some of the people who are commuting into Kent County today but don't live here. And so what we can't assume is that everybody's always going to stay in place forever into the future. As we create better and better neighborhoods with higher and higher-quality school districts, we are going to attract more people. And we can estimate how many people we're going to attract as a result of the investments that we make. So that's a really important factor. Now, really quickly, of the households that are currently in Kent County, about two-thirds of all households are single adults or couples with no kids at home. Think about all the couples that you know whose kids have grown up and moved out, and all of the young couples or singles that you know who aren't having kids yet, right? So we've got lots of households out there who don't need three or four bedrooms, who don't need an acre and a half. If they want those things, fantastic, right? We absolutely want the market to be able to provide the things that people want. But if they don't want or can't afford those things, we don't want to be requiring everybody to have three and four bedrooms on an acre and a half. And yet broadly, that is what we're requiring with our land use policies across the entirety of Kent County. And so anybody who's familiar with these supply and demand graphs, what these essentially illustrate is when you have a lot of demand for a thing, but not enough of that thing, the price tends to go up, right? The more people want that thing, if there's not enough of it, the price goes up. Landlords know this really well, home sellers know this really well. If I can build something for $250,000, but people will pay $325,000, I will sell it for $325,000. That's good business practice. But if there's, if there's a competitor out there who's able to build for 250 and is willing to sell for 275, I got to compete with that guy, right? And so we want more of that competition in the marketplace because it brings down prices for everybody over time. So this is a quick illustration of what has happened to the, the amount of homes for sale that are considered starter homes. In the late 1970s, 40% of all homes for sale were considered starter homes. That means they would be affordable today to a household earning about $60,000 to $75,000 a year. Now, less than 10% of all homes available for sale are considered starter homes. Now, this is a big problem when we're thinking about trying to create more affordable housing, especially for-sale owner-occupied housing for our middle-income workforce. The last really important thing here is the new shape of demographic market demand in our communities. A little more than half of all households, according to the National Association of Realtors, says that people would trade square footage and private green space for the ability to live in a walkable amenity-rich neighborhood. So if you can walk to the grocery store, if you can walk your kids to school, if you can walk to the library, or a coffee shop, or a restaurant, or a trail, those things matter more to people today than do big houses on big lots. Now, what's important is, those things matter more to a little more than half of the market, which means there's an entire other half of the market that still wants big lots, lots of open space, wooded yards, right? Those are still important. The, the suburbs are not going away anytime soon. Neither are the exurbs in, in our rural areas. And in fact, what we want to do is preserve our rural places, preserve our open spaces, preserve our farmland and forests, while also creating more walkable, amenity-rich neighborhoods that already have access to sewer, water, roads, broadband, gas, and electric, and all those things. Now, the problem is today, while more than half of households want that, only 9% of households currently live in one of those neighborhoods, and only 3% of the total land area in West Michigan is dedicated to that type of neighborhood. And so going forward, when we, I was with you a couple of months ago, we talked about the corridor strategy. What we really want to be doing now is working with our local units of government to identify places that have underutilized infrastructure, where we have vacant and underutilized land with access to sewer and water. We want to target those places with new investment to create these more walkable neighborhoods with a much greater diversity of housing choice. So we want some smaller homes, we want some cottages, we want some townhouses, we want some condominiums, and we want some single-family homes in those places. So we identified 32 corridors across Kent County. And what we found is, our status quo method of development is on the left, and that illustrates in all of the green places, the vacant residentially-zoned land. It's 120,000 acres. If we continue to grow the way we've been growing for the next 40 years, we will likely consume most of that green space because we're going to have that much additional household demand. But we're going to have to spend close to $8 billion in order to fund all of the infrastructure that will be necessary to spread out across the county in that way, right? And so for our commissioners that really want to be preserving rural spaces and farmland and our forests and all of those things, what we want to be doing is thinking about, where do we already have infrastructure? And how do we use that infrastructure to our advantage and build more place-based neighborhoods? So the version on the right shows us using about 3,000 acres, instead of 120,000 acres, to build almost the same number of housing units and only invest about a quarter-billion dollars in infrastructure. And generally, what that means is replacing old sewer and water lines that either aren't up to capacity or that are now 80 years old. Some of them, I think we've got some in, in Grand Rapids that might still be made out of wood. Hopefully, we're not seeing that anyplace else. But we definitely have some undersized service lines that will need to be upgraded as we think about how do we build more place-based neighborhoods. And I think there's a question, and I'm done, so happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Ryan. Appreciate all that information and all the work you're doing for the housing efforts here in the county. Commissioner Hennessy has a question.
It is this page that just does not make a whole lot of sense to me, and how you get from, from the status quo growth that could happen to what, you know, would be desired. And, and just to say that, you know, the water and sewer lines, I, I don't, I don't get this. I mean, I, what, what do we need to do there? And, and, and earlier, too, in your report, you said that, you know, people don't aspire to live all their lives in apartments. And, and, and how, how we continue to, you know, what are the means to get to where you want to go? I mean, you know, how do we get the housing that people want in the future? It's smaller. I mean, my husband and I are examples of people who've moved from the family home, turned it over to a new, young family, and into a smaller ranch. And, but how, how, how do we get there in an organized? But I don't live in what I consider a walkable neighborhood either, even though I'm in the city. So, you know, how do, I'm still concerned, the, how, the strategies to get there and how we pull it all together. And I know that's a lot of what you're focused about.
That's right, yes, yeah. That's what we're working on every day in local communities. And what we're doing is, is partnering with each local community that is ready to identify specific places where they want that kind of development, right? And so we're talking to the Village of Sparta right now. Jim Lauer just updated the local zoning ordinance to allow for missing-middle housing types, right? So they now allow for four units on a lot where they used to only allow for one. They're also allowing more places for multifamily development, and they've been doing some work downtown to ensure that there are apartments above storefronts. So all of that combined starts to create some solutions. But in other places, I was just with Mayor Keppley yesterday in the city of Kentwood. We are working right now on a city center plan for the city of Kentwood, right at the corner of Breton and 44th Street. And if you think about where Horrocks Grocery Store is, there's a big, old, mostly vacant strip mall right there, and then a 10-acre parcel right next to it between the strip mall and Crestwood Middle School. There's a ton of opportunity there. We've identified an opportunity to build about 1,600 additional residential units that range from small cottages to townhouses to condominiums. And the city of Kentwood is really focused on homeownership, right? So they're not super excited about a lot of additional rental product, but they're very excited about multi-unit condominiums that would be for sale. Maybe they'd be senior-oriented or 55-plus. They may also do some townhouses that are more family-oriented. And so our job is to help them vision what's possible in places where you feel like, hey, this section of neighborhood could have a little more love. We know it needs more investment, and we might not need another McDonald's in this location. And so the idea is, what do we need, and how do we start to catalyze that development? And our job is to bring developers to the table, to make sure the local unit of government is aware of best practices in zoning policy, best practices in economic development policy, what are the incentives they have available? And how do they think about building this flywheel of economic growth that is generating new tax revenue that can help to pay for additional infrastructure, to make neighborhoods more walkable, but then that also helps to support additional growth? Because what we find is, the more investment is happening in a place, the more investment it attracts in that same place. You get this reinforcing feedback loop. And so right now, the hard part is kickstarting that flywheel, and that's, that's our job.
Commissioner Boujack.
Thank you so much for your presentation. I find it fascinating. I have two things I'd like to ask you. Well, one is a question, and one is a comment. The question first, for your medium-income family in, in an apartment situation, what are, what are people paying today on average for an apartment, not including the rent? I mean, the utilities. And then, when you add utilities, what are people looking at as a cost per month?
Yeah. So a typical market-rate apartment that doesn't have any tax incentive or subsidy, you're going to find a one-bedroom around $1,500 a month for a brand-new one-bedroom apartment, and that's usually 600 to 650 square feet. A two-bedroom apartment today is going to rent for somewhere between $1,800 and $2,000 a month, if it's brand-new with no tax incentives. And that's because the general cost of construction is somewhere between $250 and $350 per square foot to build a new apartment. And so what we're talking about is, an 800-square-foot apartment generally costs $250,000 to build in today's marketplace. Now, we have some dials and levers that we can adjust at the local level to make it less expensive to build those things while still getting high quality. We can't make it 50% less expensive, but we can make it 10 to 15% less expensive just by allowing for, we can allow for more density on the property, we can reduce some of the parking requirements. As I mentioned earlier, we've got a lot of single-adult households. Single adults tend not to drive two cars, but many of our zoning ordinances require two or two-and-a-half parking spaces. Every one of those parking spaces costs $10,000 to install. And so the more we can help local communities think about, you know what? In this instance, you might only need one-and-a-half parking spaces per dwelling unit instead of two-and-a-half. That can reduce costs by hundreds of thousands of dollars for a multifamily development. And so our job is to help solve for some of those things, but also make sure that local communities understand the economic realities of what it costs to build today.
So for a two-bedroom apartment, $1,800 a month, and when you add utilities, what, what are we looking at for utilities?
Well, the good news is, is most apartments are really energy-efficient today, just by general building code standard. So you're ten, you probably won't spend more than $100 on utilities in the coldest months of the year.
So basically, a couple thousand dollars a month?
Yeah, in total?
With utilities?
With utilities, yeah, you're probably $1,950 to $2,000 a month.
Okay, and now my comment. I was at a Cascade Township Board meeting last week, and after the meeting was over, I was talking with the trustees, and the conversation went to affordable housing. And it's a misnomer. There is no such thing. And I said to them, there is no such thing as affordable housing. I, I can't see how young people, you know, in today's market can afford to either rent an apartment at a couple thousand dollars a month, or, you know, buy a house. My kids, college-educated kids, couldn't afford to live in Caldonia. And, and somehow, we need to change the law with regards to taxation. So for example, So for example, I live in a home where I've got twenty-three hundred square feet, four bedrooms, two bathrooms, it's just my wife and I. Because the kids, like you said, they're, they're gone. And I can't, I can't afford to go somewhere else. I'm stuck. I'm stuck there. We need to figure out how legislation can allow people like me to take their Headley benefit with them, one time, somewhere else, to a smaller house, and then put that house, which has got all this extra room and bedrooms, back into the usable marketplace. And so we can move into like a twelve hundred square foot house and not have to pay some exorbitant taxes because we moved. I have a friend who lives in Caledonia, just like me, been there forty years. He's paying, I don't know, twenty-seven hundred, three thousand five hundred dollars for taxes. He's building a brand-new house in Lowell. It's small. It's, he's downsizing from, he's going to a smaller house. The smaller house that he built costs six hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And now, he's getting zapped with taxes. They're like ten to twelve thousand dollars. Four times what he was paying in the bigger house in Caledonia. And he's telling me, I don't even know if I can afford to live in my new house because of the cost of taxes. He says, my tax bill is going to be more than my mortgage that I'm paying now. So there's something wrong. The, the formulas just don't work. It, it, something has to change.
Yeah, I completely agree. You're a hundred percent right. Josh Lunger is having conversations at the state policy level about adjustments to Headley. And I think this is the danger that we run into, where I think Headley Amendment was a really good idea in practice and in theory. But when home values jump a hundred percent in five years, but taxable value only goes up by eight or ten percent over that same period of time, you get this big mismatch, and nobody wants to pay for the gap over time. And so figuring out, how do we actually solve for that over the next thirty years is going to be a, a big challenge, and it's going to be a, a highly political issue, but one that we've got to figure out.
Commissioner Morse.
Thank you. Thanks for joining us today, Ryan. I think this is my third or fourth time maybe hearing a version of this presentation, and every time I get some new information. And that's what I would recommend, anybody that's hearing it and asking some questions or, or thinking through some things, I would recommend asking or getting with Ryan and, and learning offline some more because it takes hearing it a few times to really take home some information or, or learn the bits and parts that might make sense for your community or to take home to your district. So thank you for being here, and I would just definitely recommend that to anyone to ask questions offline to Ryan that might make the most sense to your area, for your communities. So thank you again for being here.
Thank you so much.
Okay, I don't see any, oh, Commissioner Legrand.
Thank you, Chair. I happened to be in Ada yesterday, visiting the veterinarian. And obviously, they have sort of built exactly what you're talking about. Dense, walkable, lots of housing. Do you have any idea how many housing units have gone into that Ada village?
Yeah, they're up to three hundred and fifty now. Yep, in four square mile, or, I'm, I'm not going to quote it. I used to know the acreage, and I, I don't have the number off the top of my head. But it's not a very large area that they've built a lot of additional housing. The other really important thing there is the amount of taxable value they've generated, right? For a long time, we've assumed that more density and more concentrated land use is bad for property values. We're seeing exactly the opposite, East Grand Rapids, Ada. Downtown Hudsonville is another example where they're generating a lot of tax revenue with a little bit of investment that they're making. So these are great ways to increase tax revenue to pay for services.
Wonderful. Thank you.
Commissioner Hennessy, and then we're going to move on.
Okay, thank you. You mentioned working with the Village of Sparta on zoning. And zoning, of course, is going to become really an important element. So, so what township, you know, and, and it's something that I think has been done somewhat in disorganized fashion here. So who are you working with? I mean, what townships are you working with now or working and, and coming up with, you know, really good thoughtful plans? I'm real curious as to how that part of this is translating countywide.
Good. Great question. So actually, thanks to an investment from all of you into Housing Next in order to support zoning reform opportunities. We've worked with Gaines Township, with the Village of Sparta, with Plainfield Township on making those zoning amendments. Gaines Township actually made some zoning amendments that enabled more than seventeen thousand additional housing units. When we compare what they were allowing prior to their zoning amendments to what they're now allowing after, and the vast majority of those additional seventeen thousand units are concentrated in small pockets that they're calling village centers. And so what that means is, they're going to allow townhouses, and they're going to allow residences over storefronts, and they'll allow some multifamily if it's well-designed. But doing that in small pockets allows you to conserve a whole lot of land while still generating the tax revenue necessary to pay for the infrastructure. So we've got a lot more to work to do with some of our townships. We, we're not knocking on the doors of townships that don't have a lot of infrastructure. We frankly really want those townships to continue to preserve the rural way of life, to not feel the pressure to expand water and sewer into districts that don't already have it. But for the townships that do have water and sewer, we're really encouraging them to pick one place, to say, hey, let's try this out. Let's see if we can attract a high-quality developer to build the kind of neighborhood that you say you want. And we're trying to bring some market reality to the conversation so that they're not over-regulating something that doesn't work in the marketplace. But go ahead.
If I could follow up, then if you're not working in some of the really rural areas of the county, and we have significant amounts of that, are we going to just get that strip development? You know, just along the main, you know, the main roads?
I hope not.
Yeah, because that, that's, you know, as I take my little ride up to Wallfield Park, which is one of my favorite little parks, you know, you, you start to see a lot of that newer homes all along the edges of the roads as you go. And I'm, and I, and I don't know, I think even with these rural townships that there needs, you know, that we could, they could be helped by having other ways of thinking about it as they plan and as they, as they develop, even if it's at a slower pace. Because otherwise, you just get strips.
Yes. I, I think you and I are aligned there. We tend not to tell townships what they're doing wrong, but we do tend to go in and say, hey, here's some opportunity to do things in a different way that could be beneficial to the community. And so oftentimes, what we, what we will do in a rural township, if they say, hey, we're going to experience growth one way or another, and we're not sure how to accommodate it, we would encourage more of a Hamlet-style residential development, where, and this is true in Byron Center Township, down by the high school, just outside of where they have infrastructure. There are a couple clusters where there's already a church and an old schoolhouse. And those are great places to say, hey, instead of spreading fifty houses across four square miles, you could put fifty houses in a cluster. You could either do shared well and septic, or you could make the lots large enough where everybody still is on their own well and septic. But you can create a little neighborhood in those places where everybody's backyard fronts on a big open field or the forest or whatever it is. And instead of having all these people commuting all over the place, you still get a sense of neighborliness. For some people, that's really attractive. For other people to say, hey, I want ten acres and I don't want to be able to see my neighbor. And right now, I think that that's an appropriate choice for people to be able to make as long as they can afford it.
Thank you.
Great. Thank you so much, Ryan. Appreciate all this information and all your work on the housing efforts in the county, so.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much. Okay, we'll move on to item number five. We don't have any agenda items this morning. So we'll jump to item number six, miscellaneous. Any commissioners have any miscellaneous? I have just a couple quick housekeeping things. A little good news, bad news. You probably saw that the December eighteenth Board of Commission meeting has been canceled. Unfortunately, we have to meet on the December sixteenth. So appreciate everyone's work on the appointments process. It's an important function of this committee. And we're getting close. We had, we have sixty vacancies that we have to appoint. We had almost two hundred applications. And I know a lot of interviews have happened, and a lot of decisions have been made. So we're getting close, but we'll have to consider those appointment recommendations at the committee on December sixteenth so they're ready for the full board in early January. So if you can mark your calendars and plan to be here, we would greatly appreciate that. Anything else from commissioners this morning? Okay, looks like we're under an hour. And I entertain a motion to adjourn. Moved by Commissioner Legrand. She's always one of the first. Supported by Commissioner Boujack. All those in favor, say aye. Any opposed?